Good afternoon, everyone. Hello. Good to see you. Can you hear me okay? Yes, okay. I know my voice doesn't always carry. So, welcome back to our Strategic Planning Town Hall. We've been talking about this all summer and out of last spring as we move forward through our planning process. We have a lot to cover today, but there's a couple of key elements that I want to remind you about as we kick off today. It's really important that we recognize why we're doing this strategic plan. There are a couple of key reasons, but the primary one is that we have a real understanding of where we want to go and that the whole organization has the same understanding of where we want to go. As you've heard me talk, I've been talking about us being focused and focused on what we're trying to achieve and accomplish with the initiatives that we already have underway. The Texas A&amp;M University System, the Board of Regents, are in their final review and adaptation and adoption of the 2016-2000 through 2021 strategic plan. And the Texas A&amp;M University San Antonio Plan will align with that and will become part of that operationalized across the Regent system and the Texas A&amp;M system and the accountability that we have to the Chancellor, the accountability that I have to the Chancellor and that the Cabinet members have to various system officers within the university community. But most importantly, this strategic plan that we're working on and the academic plan and the master plan and the enrollment plan, the other elements that align with this and move us forward, are going to be the drivers for resource allocation. We are going to be very focused on how we deliver our resources based on what we have in our strategic plan and what we're trying to accomplish as an institution. So, this should be our guide moving forward. So, the purpose of meetings like today, this Town Hall meeting, is to ensure that we're all in alignment. I don't necessarily expect 100% agreement on every point, that's not realistic, but I do expect that we all know where we're heading and to make sure we haven't missed anything significant that should be included. And it should be a reminder that not every single task, every single department, every single important concept of running the university is going to be mentioned by name or keyword in the strategic plan. And that's okay. It doesn't mean we aren't doing those elements. It doesn't mean we're not going to get paid, but that doesn't mean payroll is going to be in the strategic plan. So, those are some examples of what we will be thinking about as we challenge ourselves today in this roundtable discussion. A lot of work has happened in the last month in many facets of the university, both our pride and joy, from the Jaguar March to welcoming our first class of first-year students, to welcoming a large class of transfer students, to exceeding our target by 11 students. Thank you to everyone in the room, Dr. Mahan and others who helped make that happen. 5,511 students as of yesterday, correct Jane? Grant Jane is confirming my numbers. Just one more number that I want to share with you, and I talked a little bit about this at convocation, and I'll pass on to the next individual after this. When we look at where we've come from August of 2015, August 20th of 2015 to be exact, to where we are now, we have added 57 faculty positions. Now, those are not all related to downward expansion, but about 37 of them are. The others were related to turnover or filling vacancies we couldn't fill before. And we've added 80 staff positions, same amount under downward expansion, the 37 and the 37 on the faculty and staff side, but other vacant positions or positions within departments that have been reassigned, reallocated. This is really important when we think about the strategic plan, to think about the number of new individuals that are joining our team. And for them to be oriented and onboarded into the process, we all need to be saying the same thing and moving in the same direction. And those are the importances of what I see within the strategic plan and within our Cabinet leadership team. You may recall that we invited Ask You, Pennson Consultants to work with us. They've taken us this far. We're actually in the home stretch of completing the strategic plan. And I'm going to invite Dr. Jolene Kester to give us a brief overview on the planning process and where we got to, where we are today, and where we're going. And then we'll turn it over to our co-chairs, Leonard Love and Holly Verhassel, to move us forward. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Great to be back here in San Antonio in the humid south. I live in San Diego, so there you go. I'm enjoying being here anyhow, let me just say. I'm going to do a very, very, very fast review of this process, both because some of you are new, but because you've also had summer and a lot of other work and the start of another academic year. So, I am going to try to bring us all to today. This is the goal, develop a plan for the next five years. This is the timeline. You can see we are now at develop, implementation, setting sales, and we will be completing this plan within the next month. How did we get here? I guess this is what we've done.
Well, this is the step five.
This is the step five. So, let me just quickly review for you the steps that have taken place. The Strategic Planning Committee did work on mission, vision, and values. There was a lot of research that was done in order to identify the areas for strategic priorities which have been created into four goal areas for the university. Those four goal areas were then the basis for creating working groups that have worked -- working groups usually do work -- worked on each of the goals, and those working groups have identified desired outcomes or ways to think about the desired outcomes are the measurables or the verifiables. The other piece of critical work that the working groups have completed are the strategies, the broad sets of initiatives that the campus is going to commit itself to in order to accomplish the desired outcomes and therefore the goals. So, what we're going to have today is a quick review of all of that work leading up to this point, but we're going to focus a great deal or more of the time today on the strategies or the actions. So, let me turn it over to Leonard and Holly and ask them to explain what it is we're going to do today.
So, as Jolene alluded to, what we're taking a look at today is sort of the final steps in terms of building on our goals, developing outcomes, and then creating strategies which will allow us to achieve those outcomes over the next five years. So, this summer, the working groups, and they did work. What you're seeing today is sort of the culmination of the time and effort they put in over the summer. So, they were asked to create objectives and identify desired outcomes, and these were outcomes that had to be measurable. So, we actually set numerical targets within each what started as strategic priority and have now evolved into goals. To sort of get us to that point, we're going to review the vision, the core values, and the mission statements that were completed last spring. We got a little bit more feedback over the summer, and then this morning as a group, the Strategic Planning Committee met and we voted to adopt these as they were written. So, what we're showing you today is essentially a final version.
I think when you see these, they're similar to what you've seen before for the most part. I will tell you that in working on these, we literally debated every single word, word order, punctuation, you name it. I think I'm coming through without being in the microphone. But this is what we have adopted as our final version of the vision, the mission, and our core values, and so we'd like to present those to you. Our vision, A&amp;M San Antonio as an economic and social catalyst will become a contemporary polytechnic university. The university will become nationally recognized for student and academic success, embracing all students, especially those from historically underrepresented communities that we serve. Are there any?
That's different.
It is?
It is.
I was going to say, we debated every word and some things have -- we were making changes right up to the --
The PowerPoint is the right one.
The PowerPoint.
Oh, PowerPoint's the right one.
It is?
It's different, yeah.
Isn't this -- but this isn't the final. It's the one on the paper. How do they differ?
Okay. The one on the paper is A&amp;M San Antonio will become a comprehensive polytechnic university that embraces all students, especially those from the historically underrepresented communities we serve. A&amp;M San Antonio as an economic and social catalyst will become nationally recognized for student and academic success.
Our apologies for the slide. That is the correct one.
Yep. Nope, that's a fail on my part, so.
Our core values. These should be correct on the slide. A&amp;M San Antonio's core values are central to everything we do. First is excellence, and I don't think it's necessary to read through the verbiage on all these, but our first core value is excellence. In adopting this, number one, that's what we strive for. Number two is that is a tie-in to the A&amp;M system. Number two is student-focused, and as a result of feedback from the university community, we did move this to the second position on this. It was previously listed lower on the list.
Hey, grid's gone. This is different on the paper than what's on the --
How are we different?
Uh, grid. So, this is current.
The paper doesn't have grid.
No, so in this case --
Grid is --
Grid is the correct one, so slides are correct here.
The next was audacious, and I think that it goes without any need for explanation that we have been audacious, and that is something that we will continue as a university. We started from basically nothing and have grown into already a quite large and successful university, and we have a lot of potential ahead of us, and we intend to take advantage of that potential. Number four is opportunity. Part of who we are is that we provide this opportunity particularly to the underrepresented parts of the community that we serve. And finally, collaborative. And that's a part of who we are as a university. It's important that we recognize that we do that and that we maintain it as a university. And then our mission. And again, a mission versus, say, a vision or a core value should be longer. A mission answers several specific questions: who we are, who do we serve, how do we serve them? Is that different also?
Yeah. Let's see. Did we go with -- Paper is right.
Paper is right. At least there's a right version in there, right? Are there any comments, any feedback on any of the vision, the mission, the core values? Again, we've discussed these at several previous meetings. Okay, moving forward. Our next step is to look at the strategic goals, and I want to say at this point, one that I really appreciate all of you who showed up this afternoon. I know it seems like we've had a lot of meetings, but I want to tell you that in addition to teaching strategy, I have quite a lot of experience with strategic planning. I've never been a part of a process that focused as much as this one has on openness and on including everyone's perspective. Everyone who wanted to have a voice has been offered the opportunity to have that voice. And again, that's not necessarily always the case in strategic planning. So, the leadership here has been very committed to making this an open and collaborative process in accordance with our values that we just read. But anyway, moving forward, we have taken over the summer and refined these strategic goals that we presented to you in the spring, and do you want to do the most?
Yeah. So, the goals. So, the first one, and these reflect edits all the way through this morning, is that we become a national model for student and academic success, for serving underrepresented students, and to achieve graduation rates and retention rates above the national average. Our second goal is that we develop and implement an academic plan. Our third goal is that we achieve enrollment growth through strategic enrollment management, student-focused academic experiences, co-curricular programs, and student support services. And then the final goal is to engage in partnerships that advance student growth as well as opportunities for faculty and staff engagement, scholarship, and research. So, these were the four broad goals that the task forces worked on over the summer to create desired outcomes, so where do we want to be five years from now? And also then to create strategies for reaching those particular outcomes. So, it's not enough to just put the outcome out there. We have to also be prepared to say what steps are we going to take to move ourselves along this path. With respect to setting the outcomes, before we move on and start with the Goal One Task Force and their work, I'm going to ask Jane Mims, our Director of Institutional Research, to come up here and talk about how we set some of these targets. For some of the outcomes, especially those related to four-year and six-year graduation rates, we do not have our own institutional data to forecast from. In terms of admitting our first class of freshmen, we won't know until spring how many come back in a semester. We won't know until next fall how many come back in a year, and we are four to six years out from having any sort of graduation data. And so, we relied in large part on national data, which we pulled from the IPED system, and then from state and system data as well in terms of setting these outcomes. And so, Jane's going to give you a little bit of context in terms of what we used as starting points in establishing our goals.
In your packet, you have a page that looks like this except without my scribbles on it. And then the slide is a summary of a portion of this. When we submit our IPEDs reports, one of the things that we report on is graduation rates, and we look at about the four-year graduation rate and the six-year. The four-year is referred to as the 100%, and the six-year is 150% because we're dealing with a population who enrolls for the first time full-time, and we follow them all the way through. And so, it's a very specific cohort that we're measured on. We have never submitted that report before because we've never had freshmen to report on before, so it's a whole new day. But in helping them set the outcomes for these particular, or excuse me, the targets for these particular desired outcomes, what I first did was pull the IPEDs data for every public four-year Title IV participating university in the country. There are about 726, I believe. Looked at the provisional data from August 2014, so it's the most current available at the national level, and then looked at that based on race and ethnicity because the demographic profile has a significant relationship with completion rates and time to degree. Then once we looked at that, I also pulled in the regional from IPEDs, and that includes four states. It's us, Oklahoma, Arizona, and New Mexico. So, that's about 83 universities total in that group. And what we determined is that at the regional level, the degree completion rate is slightly lower than it is at the national level, in large part because of the difference in the demographic profile. But even at that point, when we compare our demographic profile to the group that we're looking at, at the national level, 11% of the FTIC first-time in college students are Hispanic. At the regional level, 23%. We're about 70%. So, we have a very different profile. And when you add to that the fact that nationally, first-generation students graduate at a rate of about 25% nationwide, and we have at this point 74% first gen in our first class, I think, we also have to take that into consideration. And so, what I recommended and discussed with Holly and with Dr. Mahan was that we look at the regional numbers based on race and ethnicity and develop our targets based on those. Because I think the point of being a national model is not that we exceed everybody by a certain margin, but that we can demonstrate that we're serving our students better than anybody else is. I think that's the goal. Did I address everything?
Uh-huh.
Are there any questions about this before I sit down? Okay.
Okay. The reason why you're here this afternoon, over the summer, each goal has had a task force that has worked very hard, and I assure you, they've worked very hard over the summer on the goal that was assigned to each group. These groups consisted of faculty, staff, administration, representatives from all of the colleges, all of the programs, and each of these task forces has had a set of co-chairs. And so, at this point, what we're going to do is in turn, turn each of the goals over to one of the co-chairs who will present what that group has worked on over the summer. And although they're not going to go all the details, they're going to present to you first the objectives that they determined were appropriate for that goal, and what these objectives are measurable, and they're the things that will help move us toward that goal. If you notice, the goals are kind of broadly stated, and that's the way they should be. Objectives are very specific. In order to accomplish this goal, we need to do this, and this, and this. And then, based on those objectives, each task force has developed a set of strategies that would accomplish those objectives and that goal. And so, at this point, we're going to turn it over first to Dr. Melissa Mahan, who is going to present what Task Force One developed over the summer, and then we'll go directly into Task Force Two, Three, and Four in that order, and then Holly and I will come back up.
Yeah, and with respect to the presentations by goals, we're giving each set of task force chairs about 10 minutes to talk about the work they've completed, and there will be time for a little bit of question and answer at the end of each goal presentation. And then, when we come back together as a group, you're going to have a chance to give us feedback about the individual strategies, so.
This one right here.
I'm going to grab these and just -- Got questions?
No questions, anything? Okay. Well, good afternoon. Let's lighten the mood a little, okay? So, seems like we need to lighten the mood a little bit in here. I was asked at my table, "Are you growling today?" And so, I'm not going to growl for everyone here today, but I'll tell you a funny story that happened to me this week. Walking down the hallway, and some of my staff were with me, and a student looked at me and went, "Grrr." I went, "Oh, my gosh, you know how happy that makes me when a student growls at me? I love it." Typically, you would not like that, right? But yes, it was a very friendly, fun growl. So, I was very excited this week that our students actually are growling. Isn't that a great thing? So, all right, so we'll talk about our goal number one here, becoming a national model. And so, we're talking about some of the desired outcomes, but I'm going to read that goal to you. So, this is "becoming a national model for student and academic success, for serving underrepresented students, and to achieve graduation and retention rates above the national average." So, when we looked at that goal, we thought, "Well, what would be some of those desired outcomes that we would want to see?" And you have a sheet in your packet that lists all of this out. So, one of the first ones we talked about is when we were looking at this national model, this is focused on undergraduate students, so I want to talk to you first about that. This was our focus for undergraduate. So, of those undergraduate students, as we looked at these desired outcomes, one of the things that we talked about when we were developing this entire plan for these new freshman students coming in was high-impact practices. So, we want 100% of our students to have completed at least three high-impact practices by the time they graduate. So, that was one of our goals there, one of our outcomes. The second outcome that we had here was first-time, full-time freshmen, their first semester to second semester retention rate. We're getting that, we're putting that at 90% because by golly, they're growling, and we think we can retain these students to the next semester, right? So, this is going from fall to spring. That's what the number we're going to be looking at here, and we've got an outcome of 90% there. Number three, we're looking at the first-time, full-time freshmen and their first-to-second year retention rate. So, this is those that will be coming back next fall, and we marked that, benchmarked that at 80%. On the fourth one, transfer students. We want their three-year persistence rate, again, to be 80% or better. I'm always striving for better. Our fifth one here. So, we looked at the NSE data, and this is the engagement of our students. And when we looked at that, we wanted to make sure that the Student Satisfaction Survey will exceed those that are competitive or aspirational, regional, or national peers. So, when we're looking at our peers around us, we want to exceed the satisfaction from our students that they're seeing. And you'll see that we repeat this in a couple of other of our goals. And then another outcome that we're talking about, so this is where the data came in from Jane. So, I want to make sure that everyone sees this sheet of paper because this does have all of that data on there that we're talking about that has the regional and the national. So, we're looking at these targets that we're looking at, four-year, six-year rates. These are 8% above the regional. So, we're benchmarking what we want to do, what our aspirations are, is to be 8% above the regional. That still puts us above the national average, so I want you to know that. And I think this will be a national model because we will be over the national market as well. Not as far above, but we still will be 3% to 4%, some places 5% above the national. But for this point, and like Jane was talking about, looking at really our demographics, we felt like 8% above the regional is where we needed to be. So, we looked at the Hispanic students, and so right now, we are aspiring four-year to be 29% and for the sixth year, 53%. On the black African-American students, 25% for four-year and 44% for our sixth year. Now, on your sheet, I want to make sure that you see that the first gen and the all students got transposed, I believe. So, I want to make sure that you understand that all students is the 37% for four years and 60% for six years. And if you're looking at the first-generation students, we had a real hard time finding any national data on this at all. And so, what we were talking about with Jane and Holly was most of those first-generation students, some of those in our demographic are Hispanic students as well. So, we kind of gauged the numbers toward that. So, we were looking at that for our first gen is 30% for four-year and 55% for our sixth year. So, does everyone understand where we got those numbers and how we did that? I want to make sure everyone understands that. Okay, great. Awesome. And then seventh was the cost to degree. We're very concerned about debt with our students, and part of the guidelines that we have by the 60 by 30 is to manage that debt. So, this was part of the 1.7 is to really look at that debt. So, strategies for each one of these. I'm going to just put, I'm not going to read every one of these up here because you've got them in your packet, most of these. But really, for the A1, 1A, I guess I should say, really was looking at the co-curricular, I mean, the curricular-based interventions. So, those are those learning communities, looking at those, instituting our writing-intensive courses, writing across the curriculum, wanted to look at promoting our undergraduate research. We have groups working on these right now, and looking at course-service learning and experiential learning. As we go into B, Jaguar Tracks is already up and going, making sure that we are instituting this all the way across the four years, really looking at that, taking another hard look at it to see what we need to be tweaking in that, looking at our learning communities as well, our student success coaches, really emphasizing those in these student-based interventions. They're really -- They're really reaching out to our students right now. Education Advisory Board, EAB, that's the analytics that we brought in to be tracking all of this data that we're looking at and helping us with our interventions for our new students. Also looking at pedagogy-based interventions and what we're doing with that with our faculty. So that has to do with our high-impact practices, looking at, again, our Jaguar Tracks program, focused on really academic advising, and how we can better align our academic advising with our degree programs and the training that we're doing with academic advising, and then promote our student-focused strategies that we've been doing. And then, again, the last one here is about our student debt. Per the 60 by 30, 60% of Texans, okay, let me backtrack to that. Students graduating cannot have more than 60% of their first year's income in student debt. Does that make sense? Okay. Right now, we're below the 60% of their first-year average income, but we want to make sure that we are watching the student debt and making sure that we're doing interventions for these students. That has to do with our ebook program, doing a lot of financial literacy with our students, and then the open education resources. So we're really watching that very closely with our students. But that does tie back to the 60 by 30 initiative that we have for the state. So that's the work that we did on this strategic goal number one. Are we moving on or doing questions? Questions for that, how we came up with these numbers? Dr. Westerman is my co-chair. He's not here today.
This might be more of a question for Jane, but did we, when we were looking at some of the regional comparisons, did we look at taking out any of the outliers, maybe like UT or A&amp;M College Station, to think about some of those numbers?
We did not on the regional comparison, but I know that Mahan also did a system comparison, which she eliminated the flagship.
Yeah. So when we were looking at these retention rates for each one of these areas, I said, "How are we comparing to our sister schools in the A&amp;M system?" Not College Station, but the other regional A&amp;M system schools. Our goals are above every one of theirs, so I will let you know that we are in alignment, but our goals are exceeding what they're currently doing right now. Good question.
Do you have a training question?
Yes, Cheryl.
Okay, I have a question, and then also just a process question as well. So in the process question, I noticed that we are alluding to things like our national peers and things like that. Will there be a link that says, "This is who we are considering our national peers," so that we're all using similar data when we do other stuff? Oftentimes, we say that, but then we don't really know what that data looks like and who we are talking about as our national peers.
Yeah, that's a great question, Cheryl, and we have talked about that. Holly, and I'll let you address that, because you're the one that reports that up to the system.
Yes, I can speak to that. This summer, under Dr. Allswain's leadership, we constructed a preliminary list of peers. Now, with Dr. O'Brien's guidance, there he is, we are revisiting that list and making sure that it accurately reflects not just the idea that they are peers, you know, people who are like us, but that they are, in fact, aspirational. So people that are like us, how we see ourselves kind of down the road in five to 10 years, so that these become things that we can strive to be like in terms of being aspirational. So, yes, there is a list sort of in progress, and then everyone will have a chance to give feedback on that as we work through developing that list of peers further.
Okay. And then my second question has to do with the handout. I just want to, that Jane gave out. I'm verifying that that handout is just related to freshmen, not related to transfer numbers? Is that correct? But I noticed, okay, but I noticed that we are also dealing with transfer in here. So what is our current persistence or graduation number for transfer? Because in here, it says our rate would be at 80%.
Right. Off the top of my head, I think there's been a question, partly because it's not a piece of data. Sorry. Partly because, right now, that's not a piece of data that we're reporting to iPads. We do answer similar questions for the Legislative Budget Board, but I don't have that number on top of my head.
But I can see how that would be helpful to have listed here, so I'm going to jot that down.
It's been hanging right around 70%. That's our institutional data, but I don't, transfer success is not something that's been on the radar screen of state and national, the state and national databases, but.
So we have been tracking, so Jane's done a new enrollment report for us, which I really appreciate, and she's tracking the number of credits and units that students are taking. And that number is actually going up, especially, it's gone up a couple of points within this last cycle, yeah. So average unit right now, one credit hour, has gone up just this semester. So we're going to be seeing that going up, which is a good trend for us, because I know our credit hours for this semester are up almost 30%, semester credit hours, which is really great. Yay, that's money, right? Yeah. Great question, Cheryl. All right. Thank you very much. I'm sure we'll have some more discussion at the end on this.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Mahan. Next will be strategic goal two, Dr. O'Brien.
Before I get going, I want to touch on something that just came up with aspirational peers. You know, I grew up in Houston and was always a Colt 45, an Astros fan. You talk about peers and aspirational peers, the Astros know all about that, so it's pretty much second nature to me. One of the things that really drew me to this position as provost, and you've heard me say this before, was the ability to start building something almost from the ground up. And you've certainly been here longer than I have and have built a great foundation. But the one goal that's unfinished is the academic plan, and that's sort of, you know, that's sort of by design, because if you look at the other three, and we've heard one, or Melissa will hear two more in a minute, numbers three and four, all of those things have components in them that will be brought into goal number two, which is to develop the groundwork for an academic plan that will then take place going forward throughout the rest of the academic year. We have to have the planning done this fall so that the strategic plan itself can be put together. If you look at the other three, and you'll hear two more, as I say in a minute, think about each one of the components that the person is going through, like Melissa just did with number one, and think to yourself, boy, there's so much of that in those strategic markers and everything else that will fit into an academic plan. So the goal of the committee that, I'm, where is, where is Robin? There she is. Robin was really the brains behind this committee. I sort of inherited this, and I'm lucky to have her as the co-chair. As we go forward, we've talked to the faculty who were on the original committee, which has been in place for quite a while, and are adding some more names to that as we go forward to help us. But all we're trying to do now is to finish out this plan and talk about the things that will appear in the academic plan itself, which will be a little bit separate and be done in the spring. One of the things that's really central to that plan, and under Leonard's leadership, we started tackling this, is something that the president came up with, and that is the term polytechnic university. That was her idea. I think it's a good one. It's pretty bold. There are very few polytechnics in the United States that have that in their title. And yet, we know some of the great universities in the United States, and I use the examples of Caltech and MIT. You can get degrees in religious studies, or philosophy, or music, PhDs at polytechnic universities. It does not mean a trade school. And that's really something that you're going to see in the academic plan as we go forward, is a sound curriculum for undergrads as well as grads, how faculty are involved in that, and developing a curriculum that all of us will be proud of. And that's going to take some real buy-in from the faculty and the guidance of the faculty, not our committee. We'll set the little ground rules, but you, as faculty, have to help us decide, because you own the curriculum. Nobody else owns it but the faculty. You have to decide what you want to be as a faculty. We've got great people in place to bring students in. We've got all kinds of ways to track them. We have to have the curriculum that they need to be highly educated and actually trained to go out and make money. We're not a trade school. We are a university, a really good one, and we're going to be great. But students want to make money. But you know what? A month ago, when we had our faculty breakfast and the convocation, Leonard made a great statement about polytechnics. But before that, and I almost said it that morning, but we were running a little short of time, I went back and I urge you to go back and look at the Harvard University Charter when it was first put together. And what it says is, "We're going to educate the young men," sorry, women, we're sort of, you know, what I've forgotten, "we're going to educate the young men in the classics, and, 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 to go out and be, you know, entrepreneurial agrarians, or manufacturers, or attorneys, or whatever." This is not something new where we're training people for jobs. And that's what I want in our statement, as a polytechnic university, sound academically. I want us to marry education and training together like Harvard did, you know, back in the 18th, 17th century. This is really important for us. This is going to be our niche to show that this can be done. So we've got a lot of work to do. I've got a great partner. We have a great committee that we're putting together of faculty, and we'll see how it goes. So let's take a few questions, or move on to goal number three, either way. All right, in your packets is this thing, he has to plug his own work. It's polytechnic, you say, and we've, a lot of us have seen this, and Leonard went to a lot of trouble to put this together. I think it's really good. So as we go forward this fall, we'll have another town meeting on goal number two, and that'll be in the fall, after we've had a chance to get some ideas, present them to you, get feedback, and move forward after that. So please take a look at this. Thank you, Leonard.
Hey, provost, you mentioned that you were going to put together faculty on this working group, are there going to be staff on this working, especially recruiters and those that are out there? Because they kind of have the pulse on what students are asking for versus just having all faculty?
It's going to be faculty, and I'll tell you why. Because I want to get across the point, as I've said thousands of times, the faculty are the ones who really own the curriculum. Now, we're going to have shareholder groups. I mean, you're, everything you have to say is going to be taken into account, but the working group itself, we are limiting it to faculty, but we're going to present it to everybody, have town hall meetings as well to get everybody's input.
So I took the opportunity to read through this polytechnic, you say, not that I wasn't listening to excellent presentations, but had a chance to flip through these two pages. And as Provost O'Brien says, this has been done before, it's not new. I noticed some phrases leaping out at me about competencies and skills, interdisciplinary in nature, there's a lot of emphasis on collaboration across disciplines. And the thing I love the best about this is the last sentence, it says that "We believe this can open up opportunities for new grants." So I'm going to take this opportunity once again to request that we devote some attention to the development of an ORSP office here, because I think that's going to be critical if we're talking about marrying real-world skill sets and disciplines with the more traditional. It seems like a rich area to explore for us as a university right now.
Right, and as you and I have talked about, Katie, this is absolutely imperative. If you remember, if you were there, when I interviewed for this job, it was faculty development means training and grants, opening an OSP and office-sponsored programs, whatever we want to call it. The president is 100% committed to this. And I didn't want to take up a lot of time, but I said, "A lot of what you have in front of you with the goals is repeated, and we're going to, our committee is going to take the best pieces of that and reemphasize it." So I'd urge you to go to goal number four, and that's exactly what's in, and I forget whether it's point number two, or three, or something like that, so that, if you'll see that, so that, we're going to take that and put it into the plan. So, because you can't have a curriculum if you don't have great faculty, and part of that curriculum is not just developing a new set of courses, but it's research at the graduate, undergraduate level.
Okay, thank you, Dr. O'Brien, for updating us on Task Force Two. Myself and Ashley Spicer-Runnles were the chairs, I don't think I need both microphones, were the chairs of Task Force Three, so.
All right, so we, we're going to tag-team our presentation, so you don't get bored with my voice. So, goal three, again, this is in your packet, but goal three is achieve enrollment growth through strategic enrollment management, student-focused academic experiences, co-curricular programs, and student support services. And so our committee, or task force, I should say, was another one of those groups that met frequently over the summer, whether it be in person or by email. And we developed seven desired outcomes. The first is, by 2021, A&amp;M San Antonio will have at least 8,900 students. And so under, in your packet, you can see a more detailed chart that gives you sort of a lens into where we were in 2015, and then where we hope to be by fall of 2021. So I won't read through that for you. The second desired outcome, by 2021, A&amp;M San Antonio will have on-campus housing for 10% of the overall student population, or the overall student enrollment, or approximately 900 beds, for all of you mathematicians or very literal people. I know that's not exactly 10% from the earlier point, just go with us on that. Point number three, by 2021, A&amp;M San Antonio will achieve the following retention and graduation rates. Thank you, sorry. For first-time, full-time college students, so freshman to sophomore year retention will be at 80%. Earlier, Dr. Mahan referenced overlap with goal one and goal three, and so you'll start hearing some of that overlap, and that's one of those places. Four-year graduation rates at 30%, six-year graduation rates at 55%. Oh, I'm reading the wrong thing, sorry. All right, so if you look at the slide, four-year graduation, 37%, six-year graduation at 60%. My apologies. Desired outcome number four, 100% of undergraduate students will have participated in three or more high-impact practices by the time they graduate, and then for our graduate students, 50% of those will have participated in two or more high-impact practices by graduation. Outcome number five, there we go. All right, 40% of undergraduate students and 20% of our graduate students will have participated in university-recognized clubs, organizations, and/or rec sports. With number six, the percentage of students who report that the institution emphasizes the following activities on the NSE, so either quite a bit or very much, that piece will increase, and in your actual packet, you have the points that we're talking about that are included on the NSE assessment. And then point number seven, A&amp;M San Antonio will add at least eight new recruitment markets. So, yay, Dr. Cooper. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Holly, and she's going to talk about our strategies, and then we will open it up for questions.
Okay, so in terms of our strategies, we took our seven outcomes and divided them into four broad categories, and there's additional detail in the packet that you have, but we sort of, in terms of preserving space on the slide, so our first set of strategies looked at strategic enrollment management, including everything from, you know, marketing and promotions and building that brand recognition out in the community as a four-year institution, included expanding academic program offerings to attract new students and meet community needs. That would be in alignment with the work done by Task Force Two. And then utilizing And then utilizing program review as a tool for program improvement and for strategic planning within the academic programs to make sure that our programs remain current and relevant. Our second set of strategies, oh, also in enrollment management before I move on, we also included things like expanding on-campus housing, expanding our physical facilities to include things like a student union, or there are other student needs. We've taught, or there's been interest in over the years, a childcare center or food pantry, sort of meeting those non-academic needs. And so looking at what the facility needs are there as well. Our second broad category of enrollment growth strategies is the expansion of what we called the student-focused academic experiences. So that would be the development of our high-impact practices and bringing those practices to scale. So talking about experiential learning, undergraduate research, writing-intensive experiences, and then the expansion of learning communities beyond Jaguar tracks. We also talked in Strategy 3B about things like specialized accreditation, opportunities for study abroad and study away, the creation of an honors program to recognize students who may benefit from additional challenge. And then in general, talking about expanding our academic support services, tutoring and writing center, the library, career services, success coaches. Our third broad category is increased involvement in co-curricular programs, strategy or action items within there, talking about the development of an alumni program that promotes mentorship and engagement in the student experience. You'll probably see some overlap there with Task Force Four. Continue to the development of student organizations, activities, and rec sports that promote student engagement on campus. Increasing work-study opportunities so that students are here on campus, earning and learning at the same time. And then the addition of academic programs with an eye towards the co-curricular programming that goes with that, honor societies, student groups, other ways of engaging students. Our fourth category then is to provide adequate faculty and staff resources to support student success initiatives, enrollment growth, and retention. And so within that, we talked about the need to have a recruitment plan that reflects faculty and staff needs. If we are going to continue to grow, Dr. Mattson talked at the beginning of the presentation about the number of faculty and staff we have added in just the past year. If we're going to grow to 9,000 students or more, we want to make sure that we're strategic about what those future needs look like so that we can allocate the resources to make that happen. We also talked about professional development opportunities for faculty and staff that support a learner-centered approach to higher education. And then developing relationships with community partners to support academic initiatives. So that's the work of our committee. And we do have some overlap with the other task forces. So we'll open it up for questions.
This really isn't a question, but it's more of a statement. And I do want to appreciate, to thank everybody who's been involved with this, with the enrollment management perspective of this, that it's not just on the admissions office or just on a specific office or department, that it really is a campus-wide approach that requires programs and resources and those sorts of things. So I just wanted to thank everybody for realizing that that's what we really need.
Engage in partnership, advance student growth, as well as opportunities for faculty and staff, engagement, scholarship, and research. So when we look at this, the outcomes that we're looking at this, and obviously this is looking a little more externally as well as internally, but we want to make sure that we look at that by 2021, 60% of faculty and staff are actually engaged in professional organizations. And if we look at engagement, we want to, say, we have 250 outside experts and leaders that are engaged with the universities, and this could be speakers or advisory boards as we move forward. And when we look at the courses that are experiential learning, we want to have 20% of the courses certified, so that's reflected in the transcripts that people have and says, yes, these are experiential learning courses. And of course, we are very proud of our military-engaged students that we have here. Very recently, we got incredible coverage about the initiatives that we have here in training faculty and staff. And so we were looking at about 18% military-affiliated, and targets get to 25%. And by 2021, we'll have $2,500 in sponsored research, external grants. Currently, huh? What did I say? We can make that goal, okay? I'll fund it, all right? Wait till we get to the fundraising goal, okay? $2.5 million in external grants. We're probably a little bit over $300,000 if we look over the years right now, so that would be a big increase in that period of time. But I believe something we look at the faculty we have now on board, it's something we can encourage, particularly when we do the office-sponsored programs. We have 10% increase in faculty scholarship and creative activities per capita faculty as we go in. And that we'll have at least 50% of faculty and staff engage in non-mandated professional development annually. So we know that a lot of faculty are engaged in professional development, so this is the combined of faculty and staff, that we get to the 50%. And so we do know we have to have an effort in making sure that our staff also engage in professional development activities. And that philanthropic support will be at least $5 million a year. So this past fiscal year was about $886,000. So this is growing at a rate of $1 million a year over five years. Okay? So it sounds like a stretch, but no worries. Okay? Got it. So our strategies. So a database of public leaders and people that could be on advisory groups or comes to serve. And we want to make sure this is well-coordinated, that not everyone acts the same one person to be on it, right? So it's a well-coordinated activity. And we engage people in the best place to be. So we know that great engineering companies are also good in business, you know, where's the right place for that person to be, right? As we go forward. And here we are, the office-sponsored programs. So definitely, that's a key to this strategy as we look at its internal support to support these activities. Professional development infrastructure that addresses the growth and needs of faculty, and we have positions that are dedicated to that already. New partnerships that build on what we're doing as being a military-serving institution. But there's, with this recent publicity we got, there's more people who want to be engaged with us in the other programs. So it's a great opportunity for us. Build alumni support of the association or make sure we increase the engagement of alumni with the institution, whether it be as mentors and so forth, as part of the speakers, and of course, as supporters financially. And we will develop a first-rate development program. We're well on the way on that. I'm hiring three positions in the next month. We'll have major gift officer, a grant officer, we'll have a development officer, annual fund person. So we're in the beginnings of having that full development development program. Thank you. Any questions? If you want to make the first contribution towards that $5 million, I'll take that right now, okay? Edwin, sir.
So yes, so my question is actually about the $5 million in philanthropic support. Is that dollars or is that also in-kind contributions that will contribute towards that?
It could be mainly dollars. Wow. You know, if you did a lot of in-kind stuff, it's, you know, it's not going to add up too much when we look at that. So let me give you a good example. So about $900,000 we got last, this last fiscal year, 50% of it came from five individuals. So when we think about the big dollar stuff, it's really about major gifts that makes a difference. And that, yes, we want to do annual fund, but it's the major gift, leadership gift, is going to make a difference in reaching that goal. It's not going to be in-kind. I'll take any softballs, but no hardballs, all right? Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ortega. I'm sure he will agree with Dr. O'Brien that when you join this university, you get a nice leisurely honeymoon period. They both jumped in in the middle of the deep end with both feet. What we want to do now is ask each of you to contribute to this process. So you have a sheet that looks like this in your packet, and we would like for each of you to tell us, of these strategies that we have presented to you and the ones that you have in your packet, what four do you think are the ones that are most urgent or the highest priority? The ones that you would say, "Let's make sure we get to these first." Which four do you think probably are the least urgent or the lowest priority? Because we have to put these in some order in order to accomplish them. And then at the bottom, there's a space where we would like to ask you to provide, if you think there's a strategy that we've overlooked, something that should be there that isn't, please tell us what that is. Are there any questions on that process? Sorry, did you have?
Yeah. I was just going to add, in terms of prioritizing the strategies, it just comes down to we can't do everything first. So it's not that if everybody picked the same four top priorities and the same four lowest priorities, that like we delete the lowest four. It's really about making decisions about which things happen now and which things happen later in terms of allocating resources. In the past town halls, we've also worked collaboratively in groups in these activities at the end of the meetings. Today, we're asking for your individual feedback. So there is, you're certainly welcome to talk and discuss with your neighbors, but the priorities represent your own set of priorities, not one set of priorities from, let's say, from your table. So we just wanted to clear those things up as you go into the activity.
And also, I think, I think we've got this covered. There should be at least one member of the strategic planning group at each table. So if you want clarification or something like that on any particular thing, there should be someone at your table who has that information that can help you. And also, Holly and I will be circulating around the room. So again, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to take them. Let's go to work.
Yep. Going to take about 30 minutes. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to clarify, we are only looking at strategy. We are not looking at desired outcomes, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Also having some final discussions and really move toward the final recommended plan, which they'll try to complete in the next few days and then forward that on to President Mattson, who will review it and make the decision about whether to accept the plan or suggest some modifications. Then ultimately, she has the responsibility to ask the regents to approve that plan, which will occur later in the year. While that process is going on, we will start the work of looking at how do we begin to actually implement this plan? And on October 27, Jolene and I will return to spend a day with your senior leadership team as well as leadership of the governance groups. And on that day, we will actually go through the steps to try to identify what needs to happen in year one, year two, year three, et cetera. We will take the step of actually agreeing on who's going to be responsible for each strategy. And we'll be recommending that committees aren't responsible for strategies, individuals are responsible for strategies. And so we'll work through that process of who's going to provide the leadership for each of the strategies. And then we will actually put some dollars to what those strategies are going to cost. So by the time that day is over, we will actually have reached a point where we can identify in year one where the priorities will be, who will be leading that effort, how much will be, how much it will cost, and what will be allocated to that effort. So and if the group can't get there by the end of October 27, they'll be able to have four hours off for a nap, and we'll bring them back on the 28th. We'll keep at it until we actually get agreement. But that is, that does begin to be the really difficult part of the process now is to actually setting the priorities and then figuring out how we're going to support those efforts. So that's where we're headed over the next few weeks. And you will be able, there'll be more information shared with you about the entire plan itself. There'll be some PR work done so that it can be distributed more widely to the campus. But I want to congratulate all of you that have spent time on this. This is not an easy undertaking, and you have a tremendous amount to do, but you've done a fantastic job. And the little secret I'll share with you, Jolene and I didn't think you could get this done in the timeframe. We weren't going to admit that when we started. But you've done a great job of working through this and really, I think, providing a direction for your university in the coming years that will make a huge difference. So any questions before I ask President Mattson to wrap it up? Don't forget to turn those sheets in. We know who's still out there. Get there. Okay. President Mattson.
Hello. As you know, most of you probably know, I'm Jen Haft, and I'm the Chief of Staff. I kind of jumped in really to the deep end of the pool, trying to figure out where we were on the strategic planning process. And as you can see from the sheets that you received today, I didn't quite get it right. So with that being said, I've got new handouts for everyone with all of the updates so that everything is correct when you walk out the door today. I apologize. And we'll also post on the website all the materials from today. So I think everyone should be good to go.
Thank you, Jen. No need to apologize. There's a lot going on and just a lot of moving parts and pieces. And I would echo the key thoughts about how important your feedback is. Our strategic planning committee really does look at this very seriously. We take every word seriously that we receive in the feedback and the input, and we circle back and close the loop. But it's critically important for us to have a strategic direction and to continue with the inspirational strategic thinking that's ongoing. As the Provost mentioned, the academic plan is a critical component of how we move forward, but so is the enrollment plan, which Dr. Mahan and Dr. Cooper are overseeing, and the university's comprehensive master plan, which Dr. Alonso has been engaged in overseeing, and the university's institutional advancement plan, which Dr. Ortega has been very involved in creating. So we have a convergence of quite a few documents that are coming together that are aligned that will set our institution forward. These committees will sunset over time, and we'll get back to the business of running the university with, still at the Jaguar pace, but very thoughtfully and strategically, and be very focused on our resource allocation. I am very I am, I am very excited about the conversation around becoming a comprehensive polytechnic university and whether that is something that we will end up with at the end of the day or not is yet to be seen. But this is an important differentiation and a distinction point for Texas A&amp;M University system as well as Texas A&amp;M University San Antonio. So, I look forward to that conversation as we move forward. I know it's a busy time of year. It's going to stay busy until the holidays. But we have wonderful work before us, a wonderful team before us, and I'm really very grateful for the cabinet leadership that is in this room and all of the leadership team that's coming from the faculty, from the staff, from our staff council, and from our faculty senate body. I thank you all very much for your time here today. And I encourage you to stay, continue to work on this document, continue to visit with Holly or Leonard or the provost or any of the other vice presidents about what you heard or saw, and will conclude informally as you completed your work to go ahead and depart. Thank you very much. Look forward to our next steps, and I'll see the strategic planning committee in its entirety tomorrow morning, where we'll be reviewing all of this information. So, please know we'll take it seriously. Thank you. Thank you, Jen, for speedy work. Yes.